This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of... ...the town of North Haven.
I'd like to call the April 22nd, 2021 special meeting of the North Haven Board of Ed to order at 6:00 PM. Tonight's meeting will serve as a workshop to allow the Board to discuss the district's mascot. As a reminder, there will be no public comments this week, excuse me, this evening. However, NHTV will be recording the workshop and it will be aired and posted to various platforms. And I believe we are Facebook streaming now, is that the right terminology?
Yeah.
Facebook streaming, live streaming now. So as we get ready to discuss this, I'd just like to say a couple of things. I'd like to address the public listening, as well as our Board of Education members, that our Board of Education is made up of North Haven residents who volunteer their time for the betterment of our community and schools. The Board of Education makes decisions regarding the school district and does not make any town-related decisions. As the issue of the school mascot has arisen, it is our duty as a Board of Education to make sure that we are listening to everyone's opinions and accounting for everyone's feelings, backgrounds and perceptions of this... Let me repeat my sentence, I'm sorry. As the issue of the mascot has arisen, and it is our duty as a Board to make sure we are listening to everyone's opinions and accounting for everyone's feelings, backgrounds, and perceptions of the issue and all other issues. We strive to remain bipartisan and free of bias of all issues, including this one, as well as remain free of politically-driven decisions and alternate agendas and find a common ground that we can all walk in together that serves our students and faculty as a one unit. We have been approached by many individuals who have thoughtfully given time and effort to present us information related to the mascot. We have heard from numerous people regarding the removal of the Indian mascot due to its offensive nature, the lack of acknowledgement of the curriculum and the suffering of what the indigenous people have endured, and the misrepresentation in history books of the Native American people, as well as a mental health concern that students may be suffering due to the mascot. We have also heard from numerous stakeholders regarding keeping the mascot because it was meant to be an honor for the indigenous people of the land of North Haven. And it was a way to honor those who were native to the land and what they feel is the true pioneers of North Haven. We hope that by hosting this workshop, the Board of Education can come to a consensus on how to best approach the issue regarding the mascot. We need to ensure we are keeping an open mind, taking in all sides into account in order to make a plan moving forward. I want to thank you all for your time tonight during the week. With that, we can move to the discussion regarding the North Haven mascot. We had a presenter tonight, Dr. Robin Mettah. So I'd like to inform the Board that I will be tabling this evening's presentation by Dr. Mettah until a later date. Under no circumstances is she canceled from presenting her scientific data to us. I just ask that it be tabled for a later date. At your table is a Board's mascot statement with the accompanying documents. There is also material which Eleni has gathered, as well as an article that Mr. Friedman sent to the Board yesterday. I went ahead with my statement first, but now I'm going to ask Mr. Stark to say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Mettah. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to thank the Board for allowing me to speak tonight. I recognize that the discussion around the North Haven Public School mascot has existed far before my tenure as Superintendent of Schools started, but I'd just like to take this opportunity to provide my perspective around this topic. As Superintendent, my role is to be an agent of the Board of Education and to enact the Board's mission, vision, and policies, as well as advocate for the students of North Haven Public Schools. In turn, the Board of Education is elected by North Haven citizens to create and maintain a school district that develops responsible, educated, and productive global citizens who can thrive in an ever-changing digital world. As a public school district, we strive every day to be an inclusive community of children, staff, and parents. A school district's mascot is intended to unite a town and be representative of an inclusive community. A mascot should instill a sense of pride for all past, future, and current students. I know that the citizens are divided around this, around the Indian moniker. It instills a sense of pride for many North Haven citizens. However, there are many others who believe that the current NHPS mascot is detrimental and divisive. Most importantly, our current students are also divided on this issue. I believe my charge as Superintendent is to ensure that all students feel welcome and included in this school district. Due to the mascot, there are current students who do not feel comfortable in their school environment, so I truly applaud the Board of Education for diving deep into this topic to ensure all students feel recognized and an important part of the North Haven school system. In closing, I do have a strong belief that all adults, parents and teachers included, are only guests in this district. The district belongs to the North Haven students. They more or less let us rent space here in order to help guide them on their journey. All of them have a right to feel included in their school district, and we as adults have a duty to provide this security to them. Thank you, North Haven Board of Education members, for your continued commitment to our students.
Our next thing is our distribution of the literature, articles, and materials. I believe most of it is all here, correct?
Yes.
What I would like to do... I'm sorry. What I would like to do is just read, for those of our recording, for those of whom will be listening in, what our statement was back on July 27th, 2020. And it was that "The North Haven Board of Education is proud of our school district for being one that is committed to consistently becoming more firmly rooted in kindness, compassion, safety, equity, and tolerance. In light of recent events around our country and feedback from our students, alumni, and local community, we believe it is time to engage in a review and reflection on some of our past practices, our current practices." One of these practices is the use of the Indian as our mascot and/or team moniker. While it has always been the intent to honor our Native American history with the school mascot, the North Haven Board of Education sees it as a moral imperative to undergo a thorough review to determine whether or not our mascot continues to align with our vision, coordination, and obligations under state law. This review process will allow the Board of Education to take into account not only the proud tradition and history of the district, but will also allow us to receive input from our alumni, students, and the local community. So based on that, we were supposed to have our meeting, this workshop, or meeting on August 6th, 2020, for the purpose of listening and receiving input from stakeholders on this topic. We've had a lot of dialogue in the last nine months. We've received, as I mentioned early, a lot of information from students, a lot of ideas and perspectives, students, alumni, and community members. I just wanted to go back a little, read part of that statement. It is on our website, correct? Patrick, it's on our website, as well as with some frequently asked questions that we answered. So I just wanted to give that instead of going through the whole thing right now. I just wanted to let people know who are listening that this was our statement back in July and that there's answers to some questions on that, too. So our next thing is, you know, to start our discussion. We can do a couple of things. We can start with sharing some different data. I don't know if someone wants to go talk about this. I think in this statement, I did mention that in accordance with the state laws... I've understood that a couple of the proposed bills that went to the state have not gone anywhere. There's been no public hearing. And most likely, I don't know the right terminology for it, but basically, nothing's going to happen with them. They've chosen not to move ahead with these two bills, with this bill to have it state mandated that a school system changes Native American moniker. So I just want to say that. There is another bill that is gaining a lot of support right now, which is HB 6619, which will be developing curriculum for Native American curriculum in all schools, similar to what the state has mandated for Black and Latino studies. And I believe that Native American studies should be right there along with them. So that bill is, I believe, coming up very shortly. So I just wanted to give a little background to those that are listening to things that are going on. Just asking if anyone else would like to have any comments after they've read any of the material, who would like to start the discussion?
I just have like a general, excuse me, general statement. Sorry. As I said before, it's weird to actually be in a room in person with everybody. Again, you're not sure how to act, but I think if I don't take this off, people won't be able to hear me. So first of all, I just wanted to say thank you to you and Ed as a chair for putting this all together tonight so we can talk about this. I wanted to let the public know that we've all gotten everything that you have sent us, whether it's been email or listened to your comments in person, or I guess virtually somewhat quasi-in-person, I suppose. And we're, by no means are we voting or deciding anything tonight. This is our chance to kind of sit down and talk to each other. And I want to assure people that I, and I know other people that I've talked to, all have an open mind in this process. Nothing has been decided. We're all been very open to all the different points of view that have come forth. I had some notes on a couple of different pieces of information or evidence that people brought to us that I found particularly persuasive, but would you know that I left them on my desk at home? In particular, and I do not remember the two women who spoke. They spoke back-to-back a couple meetings ago. I had their, like I said, I had their names and I left it at home, so I apologize. If anyone does remember, please feel free to chime in. But they both spoke, and they both were very eloquent as they spoke about Havings Native American Heritage and their opinions on the mascot and why the mascot should be retired. And I thought they did a very good job of expressing their opinions to us. And I found both what they said to be powerful on a factual and on a, I guess, emotional type basis. And I really wish I had brought their two names with me, and I apologize. To that extent, I also think there have been some good arguments that have been made for what this mascot and the name means to this town as a community. And I would just ask anybody who's listening tonight, regardless of the way this Board decides to come together as a town, whether you agree with or disagree with the decision that's made. It affects the school district, it affects our children who are in the district. And this Board, since the day I've been on it, has done everything with the best interests of children in mind. It's always been what this Board has done. It's always been separate and apart from politics and outside factors. And I'm very proud of that, and I'm very proud to be a part of a Board like that. So I just ask that all the Board members and all the public keep that in mind, that at the end of the day, that's what this Board is focused on.
May I interject for you?
Sure.
The two women were, I hope I'm saying her first name right, Eleni Salaroly and Dr. Lisa Flucker. Were the two people who spoke that are Board members.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you, Amanda.
Anya, can I say something?
Absolutely.
So I think, you know, as we all kind of sit down and talk to each other, I think this is one thing that's been missing, is us just being able to talk with each other about this process. So, you know, in my personal opinion, the process and the context of how we move forward is very important. I think, like Joe, you're saying, to the townspeople, to the Native Americans, to all sides of the story. So as we kind of look at what we're faced with today, I just ask that we look at all sides, because there's never one side to a story. There's always multiple sides, right? So we take into account everything and we can try to figure out the best way to serve our community. I think the one common theme that we see from, I hate saying "sides", but both sides, all the information that we're getting, the one common theme that I think we can all agree on is that we want to make sure that we're honoring the Native Americans of North Haven, right? That's what's coming out. Make sure that, you know, whatever we do, whatever the process is, that we honor the Native Americans that were here in North Haven. And I think that's coming out from both sides. Whether they want to keep the mascot, or whether we should retire the mascot, or whichever side you're on, that's a common theme. Is that we need to make sure that whatever we decide, that we're honoring the Native Americans and those that were in North Haven to build this town. I'm sure I'll have more to say later.
Anya, can I be recognized?
Yep. Amanda?
She said yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everybody. Hi, from my house. So I've thought about this a lot, and to Eleni's point. I do think that the process here is important, and I have spent a lot of time reading through the materials that have been sent to us and that have been very thoughtfully curated by the folks here within North Haven. We've received seven or eight empirical studies that have been peer-reviewed on this topic. And one that I found most compelling was one that I got a couple weeks ago. It's "Psychological Effects of Native American Mascots: A Comprehensive Review of Empirical Research Findings." It was from Harvard University, Springfield College, University of Michigan Ann Arbor, and the Harvard Medical School. And to boil it down, I'm not going to read the whole thing, obviously, it's like eighteen pages, it's crazy. The main crux of it is that this body of research suggests these mascots generate undesirable effects. First, they are psychologically detrimental to Native American students. Second, for non-Native persons, they are associated with negative stereotypes of Native Americans. Third, these mascots undermine intergroup relations by increasing negative stereotyping of Native Americans. Lastly, supporters of these mascots are more apt to believe in prejudicial ideas. We discussed these findings in broader social context within this empirical, peer-reviewed study. I don't say this to be leading one way or another, because these are... It's not meant to be a piece on advocacy. This is meant to be a piece that just looks at the research and looks at the result of these. So that, combined with Connecticut General Statute 10-18, stating that it is our duty to reduce racial, ethnic, and economic isolation, and also combined with Section 302-H of the North Haven Town Charter, leads me to believe that this is a good time for us to be looking at this and talking about this. I did feel compelled, also to another point that Eleni made that I think was well-made and well-taken. We have to look at both sides of this, right? So there was also a site that was sent to us from NAGA, which is the National American Guardians Association, that is an advocacy site for keeping Native American mascots. And I dug in pretty deep there, because I thought that there were some points that were made on the homepage. They ended up referencing mostly folks from Turning Point USA, which the Anti-Defamation League lists as an extremist organization and a terrorist organization. And they also referenced PragerU, which the Southern Poverty Law Center puts them on the hate watch. So I do want to consider other sides, but it's really important that we're looking at empirical facts. So I did want to bring that up. And the third piece is just that we have gotten letters from Clan Mother Piper of the Golden Hill Poguset, the Mashentucket Pequod Tribal Nation, the Akamwad Initiative, the National Indian Education Association, all sent to us as Board of Education members back in August, asking us very nicely to remove this. And because the Golden Hill Poguset are in Trumbull and the Mashentucket Pequod are also from Connecticut, that kind of indicates to me that we are in a position where at least some of the native folks in this area are deeply enough uncomfortable with our mascot to ask us to make a change. And I think that's worthy of discussion. And I will end with a quote from Dolly Parton, who's one of my favorites. Dolly Parton once said, "When they said Dixie was an offensive word, I thought, 'Well, I don't want to offend anybody. We'll just call it something else and move along. As soon as you realize something is a problem, you should go ahead and fix it.'" And I kind of think that this is a divisive topic, but it's not divisive to call out inequity. I view divisiveness as refusing to address that inequity. And I want to just thank all of my peers on this Board for having a good-fazed discussion about addressing what I perceive as an issue. Thanks, everybody.
We've got a good two hours here to go over and discuss a lot of our information that was sent. We have a lot of data that was sent over to us. There's Amanda mentioned, "Psychological Effects of the Native American Mascots: The Ending the Era of Harmful Indian Mascots."
So I... Again, I'm talking, so just talking, I shouldn't talk anymore. So I think that we do have a lot of information here, and I don't think everybody at home can see all the information we have, but we have tons of information. This probably isn't even half the information that's been sent to us like on emails since last year. But I think to, you know, Amanda's point, I think, you know, there is empirical data and there is research, and it's peer-reviewed. And a lot of it points to the harmful effects of the mascot and the portrayal of that mascot, right? If I'm wrong, please tell me that I'm wrong. And the portrayal of that mascot, or how that mascot is portrayed in public, et cetera, et cetera. So to my knowledge, I wasn't on the Board in 2015, but can we talk a little bit about the process that kind of has already started with the actual moniker? Because from a lot of the research that I read, I'm not going to lie, I haven't read everything with a fine-tooth comb, but I have dedicated a lot of time to this, especially in the past month or so. But from my understanding, especially with the psychological effects, it's very much the portrayal of the way, like the Indian quote is displayed on a field, the way it's displayed as a caricature, that those do not hold true to the Native Americans, and that sort of thing. So that's kind of been my understanding from a lot of this, is definitely it's the portrayal of, and then the lack of education on the Native American, particular to whichever town it is that we're talking about, and in general. So that's kind of what I've gathered from a lot of the research that has been sent to us, including in some of the empirical data that Amanda was referencing.
Yeah, I think the data that she's referencing, so this is a compilation. This particular study, the one on the psychosocial effects of the Native American mascots, this one's a compilation of many studies that were done previously by private analysis. Right, so you've got three reviewers and an editor for each one. And each editor, or actually each reviewer, must be an expert in that area. So it's gone through the wringer many, many times. So they found that the exposure to the mascots is so... The impact is so negative on Native and non-Native students that the study is no longer allowed to be replicated, because it wouldn't be ethical. Because they know that the exposure to the mascots and the imagery, because they've proven through their studies that this is detrimental, they can't replicate that study more currently, so that's why it's that meta-review. One of the issues that we're having is that the native population is so small. And I think that the representation is so important, because when you are a member of a group that's historically been oppressed and remains to this day, a group where there is a tremendous amount of oppression and poverty and inability to access medical care and all that, you are looking at representation as being really, really key as you're growing up. So I think, I'm just wondering what it must be like to be somebody who... I see, I know to your point, as the imagery may be the problem, but I also think if my group is of the importance, that it's going to be honored, then how am I also being elevated? What is there for me, you know? How are we following through, I think, as a society? And I think once the American Psychological Association, you know, makes a resolution that recommends the retirement of the Indian mascot because of its detrimental impact on children, I'm wondering what our obligation as a Board is at that point legally? If we are exposing kids to something that we now have been presented with scientific evidence that can be detrimental to development health? And if we're doing so now that we are aware of that, I think that's something that we need to really strongly consider.
Right, I totally agree with you on that. And I think, again, though, the underlying... I think the deeper-rooted underlying issue is the education of the oppression of the Native Americans. What happened, the true history, like, so people actually understand what's happening. Like, from, I mean, from my perception, I'm a first generation here in America, first-generation college student, you know, the history of, you know, my ancestors is one that I would want to educate people on, because a lot of people don't know the trials and tribulations that my ancestors went through. They think that everything is, you know, that Greek history is just Aristotle and Zeus and whatever else was in Egypt, Greece. But I would want people to know what, you know, what they went through, the trials and tribulations, just like a lot of the Native Americans are saying. And to, you know, to your point, Jen, you know, we need to educate everybody so they do understand the trials and tribulations and give everybody that perception, because they don't know that side of the story. Everybody just sees the mascot, the athlete, the athletics, you know, that part of it.
Yeah, I agree with you there. I think it is something that has to be part of our curriculum.
Sure.
I don't know that the mascot's the way to do that. I think that we could do that through, and, you know, especially even before that bill, we could work on that, right? We could work on that as part of our curriculum.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, I think definitely that's something that our kids need to be learning about sooner rather than later. But I don't know if a mascot is part of that.
Anya, can I jump in here for a quick second? Because I think that Eleni brought up a really good point about her heritage specifically. And Eleni, I don't want to talk about your heritage, like, I understand what it is to be Greek at all, but I think that...
I love talking about it, so.
It's, I would love to learn more about it, right? One of the public comments in the February meeting, though, was from a very thoughtful woman who said she didn't have a problem with the name "Indian" until one of her tribal elders told her that it groups everybody as one and it's not a matter of Sioux versus Golden Hill Poguset versus Mashentucket Pequod. So imagine for a second that instead of learning about Greek culture, we just learned about European culture, and that was everything that was done. And that was meant to represent you, and you didn't really get an accurate view of that at all throughout the course of any history. So I think the problem not only comes from the portrayal, which I think we have tried to be respectful in our portrayal of it. But, you know, something clicked when that public comment was given for me that said like, "It's inherently disrespectful to take individual tribes that do not associate themselves..." it's inherently disrespectful to take individual tribes that do not associate themselves as the part of a larger monolithic group and say, "We're honoring you by calling you an Indian," when they're saying, "Please don't call me an Indian. Call me Cree, or Sioux, or Pequod." So that's kind of my thought process there, but I think it's a good point.
Yeah. And I think we're agreeing. So I think, you know, I think in North Haven, so North Haven is a small town, and we have a lot of emotion going on in our town right now. Like, we can all agree on that, I think. So we need to look at North Haven and the true history of the quote "Indian," right, I'm putting in quotes, the quote "Indian" in North Haven specifically, and bring that history to light and give those kids that perception of what happened here in North Haven. So there's a lot going on with the, you know, the retirement of the mascot and the Native American mascots and the Indian mascots and the Braves, and there's a lot of them. There's a lot of different variations of it. You know, overall, in the U.S., but I think we also need to focus our area on us here in North Haven. And like you're saying, Amanda, stay true to what's going on here and represent what we should be representing here in North Haven versus just giving it a blanket, you know, educational whatever. So I think we're agreeing in this, like, circular pattern about the education piece. Got hesitant to edit.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Doc.
What I just wanted to bring up was when we were talking about the moniker, the picture of the Native American. That goes back quite a ways. And in the early 1990s, the picture was of a Native American with full headdress. I don't, you probably remember that, Jennifer. And it became known that that was historically inaccurate. And then there was a contest, and I believe one of the high school students changed it, so it was the one single feather going down. And which is more accurate, but it turned out it was the picture of a Cherokee Native American. Cherokee's in the southern part, you know, in Carolinas. So that was, and I think that's the one that's still in all the uniforms, or some of the uniforms. The other thing in the, it was about 1999 when Quinnipiac University stopped being the Braves and went to the Bobcats. At the football games, students were showing up with war paint, war bonnets, doing the looping, and there was the instruction that was no longer going to take place. That was banned. If anybody had war paint on, they were asked to remove it. So we have a history of, as things come forward and knowledgeable, we have made the changes over time. So now it's time to think about the mascot, and is there a more appropriate mascot?
So going, you know, back several years, let's just talk about this Indian mascot moniker. I think it was in 2015 when we had that meeting. After that, we had that meeting that we canceled, we have, we're doing here. But the board might never had a true vote, it was just a consensus, that we would no longer use the word, we would no longer have the moniker on any of our new uniforms, on anything, on the new school at the time, I think we were talking about the middle school was coming up. We would, anything new coming to our school system would no longer have the moniker. We also stopped using the word "Indian" on our uniforms. We started to, and each time we get a new uniform, we use an H, just as an H on it. We still have Indian uniforms in rotation, and we will have Indian uniforms in rotation that have that. So slowly, I'm just going to the moniker here, we have taken away that moniker. What the board needs to officially do is make a decision to retire the moniker. Now, I'm talking about the mascot, that picture up there, because we basically have done that already, and that needs to come, be one of our items that we vote on. The other part is the Indian name. We've got two different things. Here we have the caricature, and then we have the Indian name. I think most of us have in conversations, and I'm not speaking for anybody, have a think, it's time that that moniker gets changed. We need to maybe perhaps talk with our schools. Not changed, let me put it this way, new word, that that moniker needs to be officially retired by the North Haven Board of Education. That moniker needs to be officially retired. Because basically, we have retired it, but we've never officially retired it. Now, saying that, if this board should vote to retire the moniker, the caricature, what parents' groups should do, there's nothing we can do. We received some information today, an email, I think everyone saw, with some pictures of, that were coming from, what I believe they were coming from the parents' groups, you know, with the Indian name, with the Indian moniker, et cetera. We have no control over that. If they want to, if parents' groups decide that they're keeping it, keeping their names, they're going to keep their names. We have no say in the tomahawk club and, let's see, anyone's name, does anyone recall?
Oh, the Indian Hooster Club?
And the Indian Hooster Club. So on their T-shirts, we have no say in what they sell outside of school. I just want to bring that out there as we talk and all have those conversations. So that's one point. I also like to say, people, if we retire the mascot, just like if you or I retire, doesn't mean I never existed. I existed. And if you're, there's a trophy in that trophy case, and it has the Indian moniker on it, it's not being removed. There's a lot of honor for people who won those awards under that, with that moniker, I guess. I will, I will say, there was a young woman who spoke at one of our Zoom meetings who said she was embarrassed by having it and asked us to remove it. I believe we removed hers from the case. So we've done that. I just want to get that straight, it's a retirement, it's not deleting the Indian moniker. I believe that we have a gift at one of the schools, might be the softball field, there's a rock with the Indian...
Oh, yeah, Coach DeMeo's, it says DeMeo Field, I think, yeah.
Yeah, okay. If that was a gift for one of the classes, we're not going to remove that rock. Also, at the football field, Vanacore Field is not Board of Education property. I believe there's, I haven't been walking there in quite a while, but I believe that there's an Indian head on there. The Board of Ed has no jurisdiction to remove that Indian head. So those are things I think we just need to continue to talk about, that people understand that.
Anita, I mean, I think there's some statements that we can all agree on. You know, going back into the 1950s, when the, when the students were, and this was nationwide, that the, any school that was adopting any name, you know, Warriors or whatever, it truly was meant to honor the Native Americans. I rarely believe that. You know, I also believe that the, there's a group of sports alumni that had a wonderful experience as part of the different teams. They have wonderful memories as their time. And I can understand, truly understand, how they're attached to those memories. And, you know, they probably enjoy looking at the pictures. I would never want, I can't, we can't take away anybody's memories, and we wouldn't want to. But then now we have a group of students that we've heard from that said, when they go off to college, they're embarrassed to say they played for the Indians. And I think we have to recognize that, too.
I think it's interesting, Anita, that you separated the moniker from the word or name "Indian." And I didn't, this is the first time I'm laying eyes on this study that Amanda had referred to. But what I'm, what I think I pulled from it, and again, I'm scanning it, so I didn't get to read it very carefully. But a lot of the studies that are mentioned in here, it seems as though, first of all, the participants are mainly from Arizona, the first three studies that they mentioned at the beginning. Two of them are students from Arizona. One of them is a college of Native American, predominantly Native American students. But what I thought was interesting was that the findings in here are specific, specific to their reaction to pictures. They were shown slides. Am I reading that right for people that have read this completely? Because I didn't read this completely yet.
It's the imagery, right? That's why they don't want to redo it, because, yes.
Right, so it's the imagery, it's the actual picture of it. So that, so they are also separating an image versus what we would refer to as the word "Indian." So it's interesting that you separated it like that, Anita.
As a matter of fact, if I could add, I have the original 15 presentation materials. And I also have, and I have an extra copy, if anybody hits, documents in support of changing the mascot, we can run page with it and have it. It goes back to letters to Dr. Crowe and some other, there's a section about the Europeans and the Indian people in New England, North Haven and surrounding towns. And it talks about the Quinnipiacs, which is obviously our tribe, or clan, I should say. So if anybody wants a copy.
I think we have that.
I think we have that from a couple of years ago.
From Talia? Talia?
Yeah.
Is that Talia?
Or from...
The first one is from Talia. This one, I don't remember, I don't remember what the...
That's from Jo, I think.
Yeah. So, if anybody wants, if anybody wants a copy, I haven't actually...
I think one of the issues with the word "Indians" is that there were hundreds and hundreds of tribes originally, right? So all with distinct characteristics, all with distinct traditions. And to lump everybody in encourages a stereotype. Even if it's, just to say the word "Indians," everybody has a stereotype that pops up in their minds. And when we keep a name like "Indian," I think that we are also, we are also presenting a situation where our students begin to stereotype. And stereotyping is one of those behaviors that transfers, right? It's not just, you're not just going to stereotype Indians, you'll stereotype other things. And that's one of the impacts that when, this study didn't just focus on Native Americans, they also focused on non-Native students. And although the Native, or this group of studies, so although the impact was most profound on Native students, as far as depression status, that kind of thing, the impact that it had on non-Native students was to cause a desensitization to issues around, around race and things like that. And that's one of the things, because we have very small Native population, but I think we need to think about the impact that that has on our non-Native students as well. That generalizing, that umbrella term for something that historically is hundreds of different tribes and traditions. Patrick, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I know you're only in this position for a couple of years now, but in your time, or even before you got here, are you aware of any of our students that are Native Americans that have been upset by or concerned about this stereotype?
Never. We brought them to my attention.
Never? Okay. Because I actually, you know, in all of the athletic events and all of the different things around town that I personally have attended, I have never witnessed anyone ever doing anything like wearing the face paint, like you mentioned, or any kind of headdress that is referred to in a lot of these articles. I've never seen that. And I, and I do, I don't think that our students are offensive in their representation of the mascot. So I'm happy to hear that you haven't heard anything about that in the schools either.
Because there was a really concerted effort in the early, it had to be in the early 2000s to stop all that nonsense with the war paint. And there was really a concerted effort at the high school to make sure that didn't happen, have students come and do a war dance or whatever. So it's worked.
That's great.
So I wanted to make a comment just in response to what Jen, you know, mentioned in terms of the stereotypes. So, you know, I understand, you know, the symbol of stereotype and when you say something, people have different impressions, and they have different thoughts and different stereotypes or different biases, you know, in terms of that specific group, you know. But when you look at it, when you're going through the process of explaining the stereotype, I was thinking, okay, unfortunately, in the society we live in, you know, groups are categorized differently. So there are subsets of different groups. You have Asian Americans, you know, you have African Americans, you have Hispanic Americans, you have Latin Americans. So there are subgroups within those groups. So at the end of the day, just the way, you know, society is, we have different ways in which we, you know, identify different groups. And so that's something that we don't have much control over. I think what we can do is we can educate our students, which goes back to the academic curriculum infusion. You know, point of the whole discussion is that, let's look for ways, this is another part of the solution, look for ways to infuse the history into the school system so that the students actually do know the history of North Haven and connection to, you know, the Indian tribe and things like that, you know. But in terms of, you know, someone, and I understand, I completely understand the fact that you see a certain, you know, label or name for a certain, for gender, race, ethnicity, whatever the case may be. And then you have all these stereotypes that you, you know, know everybody who is part of that group. So I understand that. But, you know, when you look at it, you know, the way, you know, we're supposed to look at it, you know, it's, it's not, I don't see that much of an issue there. I don't like to put myself in positions of, you know, in positions where I could say, okay, I empathize, I try to put myself in that position, but I can't because I'm not from that specific group. But I can listen to people from that group, I can, I'll try and understand, I can do my research and everything, and I completely understand and I support, you know, where they're coming from. But my thought is, it looks like we are in the direction of, let's get rid of the mascot. We've done it, let's do it officially. But the question, I think, you know, is hanging out is, you know, in terms of the Indian name, what do we do in terms of that, considering the history of the town and the connection with the Indian tribe and everything? You know, so as we're continuing the conversation and everything, I hope that we'll talk about, you know, reflect on the historical perspective of it, and then what's the best way to sort of, you know, deal with that issue in terms of the Indian name? You know, where does it balance? Is it something that we retire also, or is it something that we keep? But then we also find a way to extensively and strategically infuse it into the school curriculum whereby these students are well-educated about what it means.
Along those lines, you know, when you were talking, Jen, and Goldie kind of touched on it, I was thinking, you know, I honestly, I don't know if I agree with you or if I disagree with you on the, on the, you know, the term "Indian." And I do take very seriously what the comments that we heard and how people are saying it's lumping many different groups altogether under one general name. And like I said, while you were talking, I was thinking, and Goldie kind of hit it on the head of to what I was thinking, it just seems to me like that's kind of what we do as, as a society or as a global society. I mean, we label people as European or American or African American, Asian American. I mean, there seems to be subsets of every different group of people. And I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing. I just, I know from my perspective, growing up, I'm Italian, with the name like Salomini go figure, right, I guess. But people would, you know, and I remember this with my grandparents, people would make some sort of reference to them being Sicilian, and they would fly... and they would fly off the handle, no, we're Neapolitan, we're not Sicilian. It was offensive to be called Sicilian. So I can see it both ways, right? I can see like how you're saying, okay, you know, they were, they were Neapolitan. They were Italian, but they were Neapolitan, and that's kind of where they identified. And I don't know if they were offended to be called Italian. I mean, they kind of saw it as that's how they, you know, they were Italian Americans. But I can definitely understand what you're saying and what other people are saying. When you group things together, you kind of lose a little bit of that, that individuality and that culture. But I also think there's something to be said for, for doing that. And it, in a way, it kind of unites people. At the end of the day, when the president is making an address, he says, "My fellow Americans." He doesn't break it down into, "My fellow, you know, Connecticut, North," I mean, "North Carolina," whatever. And we're all grouped together. And I would think people from the Northeast think they're very different from people on the West Coast to people on, and Southeast. And I know, maybe I'm overgeneralizing here, but I only do so to kind of just throw it out there in the sense that I think there are many different levels to analyze this and think about this. And I don't know if just using the term Indians is a divisive term. I think like Goldie alluded to and Anita alluded to, this board has recognized for a while, and it predates me on this board, that the way that the caricature or the moniker was depicted is kind of something that's been phased out over time. And as Anita just said, you know, I think part of what we have to do here to, well, not today, but in this process is to formalize whatever we're going to do there. At least from my perspective at this point, and it's not, like I said before, nothing has been cited, but I don't see the same polarizing impact of the, the term Indians as I do of the caricature and moniker and showing up as, Doc said years ago, when people would show up in war paint and headdresses and things like that. I think it's good that those sort of things, we've kind of evolved and said, this obviously has the ability to offend people, and we take a proactive stance and say, we're not going to tolerate that.
I can appreciate, I can appreciate what you're saying. And I definitely about how every group has its subgroups, right? Or breakdown, right? Like you're talking about with Italians. What we can't lose sight of here is that we're talking about a race of people, not an ethnicity. Talking about a race of people, so that's different. And we're also talking about reducing a lot of that to a generalized term to be used for a sports team, right? So that's the mascot portion of it, that I think, and first of all, Indians isn't even a term that's acceptable anymore. So we're talking about a term that's now not culturally appropriate or responsive. We're talking about a race.
I finish what you're saying, but come back to that India, Indian is not a term anymore. Because I have questions about based on the, from the information that we did receive.
Right, typically it would be Native or Indigenous.
Okay.
Indigenous, like, so there's groups of educators that I am part of that are Indigenous educators, and that's how folks are referring to themselves, rather than Indian or it's mostly Native or Indigenous.
I didn't want to interrupt, do you want to have a pause of this conversation?
Yeah, but I think it's important to remember that we're taking, you know, an entire race, which is different. And a race that's historically in this country been mistreated, right, for hundreds of years, and continues to struggle, and based on all of the data that we have. So I think that's where my thing is, it's not, so that's where the term, I think, is still, I still take homage with the term because of that.
And I can understand that, and I just want to be clear, I wasn't making light of it or.
No, I know.
I understand it's, you know, it's a culture as opposed to a race. I was just trying to draw like some sort of analogy in my own head for how, you know, how I can understand how people are, obviously, can be affected by, by words and by phrases, but I, no means was I making light of.
Oh, I wasn't, no.
No, I know, I just, I just want to be clear. I was not marginalizing or making light of anything.
Yeah, I think that's the, I think that's the linchpin for me, is the, the race part of it and the part of the inaccuracy of the term.
Doc, do you want to go, because I already talked a lot.
I did, I did, I'm just piggybacking on what Jennifer was saying. About two weeks ago, in one of our local papers, I don't know if it was the one that comes out on Thursday or Friday, in the sports section, there was a picture of, I don't know what team was playing. It might have been the basketball team. The good news is they won, but the headline was Indians scalp whatever the team. I went to that, I mean, that's about as stereotypical as you can get. And I agree with you about the term Indian. Yeah, they, they, even their tribes, they're not a whole nation. They don't call themselves Navajo, they call them Bene or something like that. Some of them call themselves the First People. I mean, they all have different names than the names we even use for tribes.
But yet, I'm reading something here on July 14th, 2020, from the National Indian Education Association. On behalf of the National Indian Education Association, NIA, the oldest and largest organization serving American Indian, Alaskan Native, and Native Hawaiian students and educators.
Yeah, I think that's sort of like the NAACP sort of thing, where, you know, you sort of have the national, you know, for advancement of colored people, it still remains their name, but not a term that anyone would utilize any longer. Because when you go through the rest of this, they talk about Indigenous and Native cultures, the rest of the letter. What was the name, Anita, what was that one? I'm sorry.
It was from July 20. It was like a, with a monogram.
Thank you for the visual, that was, because there's a lot here.
Right hand, please?
Yeah.
I think this is.
Anita, do you need one more comment?
Go ahead, Amanda.
Thanks. So, you know, Joe, every time I listen to you talk.
Joe, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I just have to make sure my son actually has the ride home from his track. I'll be right back.
I was just going to compliment you on being so thoughtful, that's it. But I am struck by how thoughtful everybody is here, right? And I know that we're wrestling with the kind of esoteric nature of what's a nickname versus logo, mascot, moniker, all that good stuff. I have been thinking about this a lot, and I think that instead of thinking of it as taking something away from some people, I would like to, to just reframe it a little bit and say like, let's invite more folks into the fold. I have personal friends who do not let their children participate in sports because they don't want the Indian word across their child's chest, right? We had 136 unique people email us asking us to change this. We had 22 people come in public comments on February 11th, asking us to change this. We have over, we have a petition with over 5,000 signatures out there, asking us to look at this. Now, you can say there are 5,000 signatures asking us to keep it too, and I recognize that. But like, wouldn't it be nice if we could all be a pack of raptors, or a snuggle of sloths, or a grumble of pugs? I don't care what it is, just I think picking an animal would eliminate the need for this kind of debate over, you know, whether something is appropriation or cultural appropriation, whether something is honorific or disrespectful. And I think that by bringing those additional folks who have, have clearly expressed students, former students, residents alike have expressed discontent with this, I think we could bring them into the fold, and, and everybody could proudly wear their Red Hawks sweatshirts and pants, and go to college, and have their, their duffel bags and just be decked out to the nines in their swag, and everybody could feel good about it. That's, that's kind of what I'd like to say about that. And as far as the moniker versus the nickname, there is a study in our package, it's little wrote.
I'm looking for that.
Indian Sports Nicknames and Logos: The Effective Difference Between American Indian and Non-Indian College Students, that does talk about the word Indian, the nickname, being part of the study. To Oleni's point earlier, they did look at slides, but if you read through the study, it is both the nickname and the logo.
Okay, so all valid points. I think we're all doing a good job keeping an open mind. I think back to the, I think, I just don't think that we should, like, I don't know, make distinctions for different cultures. I think all cultures have gone through something, and all cultures have been separated within themselves. So I think we do need to recognize that there are a lot of different cultures and races and so on and so forth. And everybody has had some sort of trial or tribulation that they've had to work through. I'm just going to leave that over there. I'm going to move over here and say, I understand what you're saying, Amanda, and I wholeheartedly agree with you that we need to find a balance. Like, I'm all about balance, I'm all about us finding a way that we can all try to find a place somewhere in here between over here and over here that we can all be together on. But I, I think if, in my opinion, there are schools, not in my opinion, but there are schools that I, you know, did a search on, I want to dive into it a little bit more deeper, that have appropriately kept the name. They've gotten rid of the moniker, but they have appropriately kept the name. I mean, Utah has a whole memorandum of understanding about why, how, what they need to do. And this would be a lot of work to try to put something like this together. But I think we can find a way to do this the right way. And I think if we were to change it and be, one of them you said was pretty funny, the Snuggly what? Did you say?
Sloths.
The Snuggly Sloths. That was pretty funny. But let's say we did change it to something like that. Sure, you have a group that's super happy that it happened, but now you have the other group that's not. So I don't know that this is about us trying to make everybody happy, although that'd be a perfect world to live in. I think we need to try to do what's right, find some sort of balance to what's right. Because I think if we were to just change it, you have those students that don't want to change too. And I totally get what you're saying, and I think that's why we're having this conversation. But there is a group of kids who don't want to change. So then what's the psychological effect on that group of kids? Or, you know, I just, I just think we need to really think about this before we start to throw out like, let's do, change it to this, let's do that, let's do the other thing. There are people who are doing it appropriately. And I tried to quickly look to make sure it was still current, I want to look into it more, but like you're saying, bring other people to the table, of course. I totally think we should bring other people to the table. But it needs to be a balance of those people at the table and see it, like, the Indian is so. I moved to North Haven in 2007, and we moved here because of the school district. Like, it was the middle of where both our families were from, it was a nice town. It was like rated on whatever that website was for best towns to live in. And, you know, being here for so long, and especially now, being on the Board of Ed, the, the Indian is such like a fabric of the town. Like, and I know we have nothing to do with the town, like, I'm not saying that. But I just feel like if we put our heads together, we can make this right without just completely pulling everything out. Does that make sense? That's all, I just want us to make sure that we look at the possibility of keeping it in the right way, maybe the way some of these other schools did. Sure, it's a lot of work, but, I mean, this is, this is why we do what we do, right?
Olenia, did see what you sent us about some of the districts that were able to keep it, but they kept it with the support of local tribes.
Right.
And like what I keep coming back to is the Golden Hill Paguset from Trumbull, the Mashentucket Pequod, and several other folks who recently publicly commented on HB06619 have all said that they don't like the use of Indian as a mascot or a moniker, right? And this is where like the Mashentucket Pequod has, has kind of been on both sides of this issue. Previously, they had said it was okay. And to be very honest, that made me feel a lot better about North Haven utilizing it. Having the support of the tribe was, that was good. But now that they have come to the other side of the issue and said that they are no longer comfortable with that, that kind of, I hear what you're saying, and I'm not opposed to doing the work. I'll, I'll read anything you want me to read. I will absolutely look up and talk to anybody you want me to talk to. But the problem is like when we have Indigenous people come and comment at our, our board meetings and tell us that their children don't want it, that they don't like this, and when the tribal leadership tells us that they don't like this, I think that should account for something.
I don't think that that's something that, that we should ignore. You're right, Amanda, we should definitely take it into consideration.
And that's not what I was saying. I wasn't saying we should ignore. No, 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 I'm just saying, I wasn't saying we should ignore.
Right, no, I know you weren't. But I think what's equally important though is to think about people that are Native American that did speak out. We did get some emails from people in North Haven who are Native American, who support the use of the Indian, they even included the moniker. I believe one of the students was a college student who said she is not offended that North Haven uses Indian as a mascot. So, you know, like, I don't, I don't want to ignore anyone's opinion at all, but I, but I don't want to discredit anybody either. You know, there are people that are vocal about their opinions, and I don't think that that should necessarily be weighted more because they're vocal. I think that if we did go townwide and we did have a vote, right? And I know that we've talked about this before, and it's not something that is in the works at all. But I think that if we had a town vote, I think people would, from what I hear, from conversations, people want to keep it, and those that want to keep it don't speak up as much or as loudly as those recently who don't want to keep it, if that makes sense.
I think it does make sense, Randy. And, you know, I have read the email from the student who said, you know, she is of Native American heritage and that she is not offended by it at all. And I, I think that's, that's a good, like, that's certainly prerogative. The problem is that we're at a stalemate, right? Where some people are saying, like, we're uncomfortable with this, our children are not allowed to do, are not allowed to engage in sports, we feel like you are not abiding by, you know, Connecticut general statute 10-4A, where you're producing racial and ethnic and economic isolation. Like, there are people on both sides of this issue who are entrenched, right? And I'm not saying that either side of this issue is wrong. I'm saying that a good solution is saying, let's pick an animal, and then we can stop fighting about it.
So to push back on that just a little bit, Amanda, so that statute, whatever that was that you just read, about isolation or whatever, whatever it was.
It is reducing racial and ethnic.
Economic isolation, 10-4A.
I find it interesting that that's a Connecticut statute or law or bill or whatever it is, but yet Connecticut does not want to take a stance and push the bill to cancel or to require all towns in Connecticut to get rid of the Indian mascot, yet they are pushing to enhance the curriculum. So it's interesting that they are not supporting the removal of the mascot, which makes me question.
I agree with you there.
Right, which makes me question, do they, do they see it? Do people at the state see it in the same, in the same perspective?
I did, I did speak with the, the person who submitted the bill during this session, and they are planning on submitting it again in the next legislative session. I can't speak to whether or not it'll gain any traction, but I agree with you 100% there, Randy.
Yeah, so, I mean, and we have two casinos in our state, right, that are, I mean, they're, what is it? What is it?
Who is it different, Indian?
The Pequods.
Pequods and, right? So you would think that the state would take a stronger stance if they truly believed that it was hurtful, and they're not. So that, I don't know, this makes me think.
Can I add something to, I think, that's kind of connected to what Randy's saying? So there was a, there was a study that I, when I was doing some recent couple of weeks ago, that I, I think it was out of a university in Michigan, I don't remember which specific one. But it talked, they surveyed Native Americans in terms of their perception of the mascot, being used in sports. I don't remember if it talked about the name, but more like the mascot, the image and everything. And what the research found was that Native American Indians who are more connected to their history and their culture said it was offensive to them. Native American Indians who are not that connected to their history said it was not offensive. So my point is when you look at. So my point is, when you look at any issue that affects any group of people, it's gender, based on gender, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, religion, whatever the case may be, you're always gonna find people who are not offended by something and some who are offended by something. My thought process in those situations is, okay, let me focus on the people who are, not focus on everyone, but let me also listen, you know, closely to people who are connected to that issue or are connected to their history and everything, you know? So it's sort of like, for example, you know, I'm originally from Nigeria. If you talk about fourth generation Nigerians, they don't even know where the place is in the front end of Africa. But if you talk about first generation Nigerians, they know exactly where it is. So by the time it gets to the fourth generation, you know, of Nigerian-Americans, they don't even know, you know? So they're not connected. If you talk to them about issues that happen, you know, they don't even, they're not even, they don't even follow it. They're not even conscious about it. They don't care about it, you know? But like I said, my point, you know, is that as we're talking, you know, let's sort of also know that, you know, the, there's a group out there within the Native American, you know, tribe that are more connected to their history and everything in comparison to others. Everybody is connected, you know? If you're 2% Native American, whatever the case may be, you should be listened to, you should be heard. But I think we always, you know, we should think about that distinction. Especially, you know, just citing that, that research that came out of a university in Michigan.
Was that the Freiberg one?
Sorry?
That might have been the Freiberg study.
If I, I, don't quote me, but I think it was University of Michigan.
I think that's where Freiberg, yeah.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, it's the Freiberg one.
Yeah.
You know all the studies.
I know, I think, I think what's interesting and what I think is so admirable as I sit here and listen to all of us is the amount of research that we have all taken, the time that we have taken, all of us have taken, to do our work on this, to be able to have this workshop. And I just wanna thank everybody again for, for doing that because it's clearly coming through as we talk about a study and who knew which one, that he was responding to, with the work that we've been all doing. And, and I wanna thank you all because it just shows how important all of us take our position as Board of Ed members representing our town and this, and this issue.
Nada, I think, I'm coming, I've probably thought about this for a while. Coming into the confusion is whatever our decision is, I really do believe in the rules, the rule of thirds. Probably going to be a third of the people, they're gonna be upset that, that we decide to keep it. There's a third of the people that will be happy with us because we are changing it. And then I believe in town, we've had a lot of new residents that probably don't care one way or the other. They're not invested. And at the end of the day, we just have to keep talking about it, vote our conscience, and try to be as inclusive with everybody as much as possible. And doing, doing it in good faith and being civil and listening and talking and sharing, so.
Good point, though.
Doesn't solve any problems, so.
So the way, from this conversation tonight, what I'm hearing is we actually have the two issues. We have retire the moniker, and then we have the issue of keeping the Indian name, just the word Indian, the name Indian, or eventually go to find something else. So I see two things here that we're having on. Going, you know, now I'm looking to where we have a further discussion. I think we all can agree that we will have a vote on the moniker. I think we all understand that, that we are gonna have a vote on retiring the moniker. I think we need to continue our discussion. And we have time tonight on the Indian name. As what you had said, Amanda, about bringing people, you know, other people in, we look at the different things. Again, I keep saying, I look at different things that we're looking here and some other things. And many of the people are referring to themselves as Indian when I read these things. There was another, there's one thing that I forgot to send that went on to my state website about the curriculum. And there's another one I forgot to send you, Patrick, that did have a, you know, they literally were, in their letter, they quoted, you know, great Indian woman, and that's not here. So they're quoting that person, and that's, that's not here. So I'm just torn, I'm so torn on, on the name. But yet, I also remember our meetings and where Dr. Pullington and Eileen had spoken. I do remember that meeting, and that did, that did emotionally affect me that, oh, there. So I'm truly torn which way we go. And I think as a group, we need to figure out where we wanted, what do we want to do. Are we saying, from what I'm hearing from some people is, we'd like to keep the Indian name because it is. And that's a perfect phrase, Eleni, the fabric of North Haven. Our street names are, have Indians on them, all different Indian names. Our town seal is Chief Montowee. There's a lot of, it's a fabric of North Haven. I mean, that's, that's a great way to call that. So to go back to that, so then we have that, that conversation. Do we keep that name? Do we not keep that name? So this is where I lost my train of thought with that. You're saying what you're hearing in the room? Keep the name with? Right, and that's what we have to have continuing discussion. You know, Ron, I haven't heard from, from you yet. I remember listening, and you're new to the board.
Yes.
But that's where I see our great divide is. I don't see our divide right now as a board on retiring the moniker or the character. As I listen to it, that's not what I see as, as a divide. What I see as a divide, or maybe not even a divide, what I see is, something we all need to talk out is the use of the word "name Indian" as for sports teams.
Well, just, you know, to your comment, yeah, I am new to the board. Only been out for a couple of months, but I am not, I am not, thank you. I am not new to North Haven. You know, I've been in North Haven since 1969. So as we talk about Indian culture or the names or, you know, how it affects the town and the town's people, it is an incredibly deep part of the fabric of the town, to use, to reuse the word fabric. Like you said, between the name of the schools, the town, the patch, the logo that you have on your stationery for, for the town, it's intriguing to me that people find it so offensive as a, a name on a sports team, but yet we enjoy all the opportunities the town gives us in buildings that supply these names. Now, it's not to say that they don't have a right to be upset. They do. Everybody has a right to their own opinion, and I would never deny that. But the confusion that I have a little bit is that they are so adamant about the sports name, but yet we use all the advantages of the town, and it's all related to, you know, Native American names and symbolisms and everything else. So, you know, I will say that in the two months that I've been here, we've been discussing this quite almost predominantly. It's, it is fascinating that the amount of work that you guys, men, women, have put in to this, this area is outstanding. I, I'm shocked at the, the references that you can make off the top of your head and the studies that you can name off the top of your head and the obvious thought that everyone's put in it. So I am just trying to catch up on that level. But as far as the town, you know, I can say that I've had, you know, family members participate, have represented all state teams with the name Indian. I've had my children go through the school system with the name Indian. And, you know, my personal experience has been that it has not been an issue. But that's my personal experience, and that's why we're here to talk about everybody's experience. So I would just like to, you know, thank everybody for allowing me to kind of ease into the, to the conversation. But in fact, I, I really believe that the town is based on what we're talking about right now. And, and it is difficult for me to separate the team name from what the town provides and the use, again, the use of what the town provides us. And that's, you know, that's where we're at, and that's why we're talking about it because there is such a, a degree of difference between the two. And I don't know that there really is. So that's what I really am thinking at this point. So I appreciate your thought.
Thank you, Ron.
I think that the tricky part, where it gets murky, is not in the street names or Montowee school or anything like that. Those are indeed honorific things, right? Those are honorific, those are things that are the fabric of our history, part of the town. I think where the transition comes with the sports teams, as you go to a football game and you hear, "How about a big hand for your North Haven Indians?" It's a group of folks who are referring to themselves as Indians. They're Indians, and that, they're not Indians, right? And so it's a race, it's a race, right? So I think that's where that line gets crossed. And I think that it's really, really important that, and sports things have been things that we make dolls of, where we get, you know, and I know it's just the name, we're talking about just the name, but it's been something that's sort of been like a pet thing. And I think that's where the, the difference, that's where you cross the line from honorific into overgeneralizing, I think, is where I'm at.
And I, I, I hear what you're saying, Jen, and I know I keep feeling like I'm trying to like defend the other side. It's not what I'm doing. I'm trying to just, like, hear you out, but also, like, think globally for the town, like, how we can do this okay. So I, I understand what you're saying and the hooting and the hollering and all that, but I think. That doesn't happen, though, honestly. Our kids are great. I don't ever want, for a second, for a, no. I go to every football game. That does not happen. Okay, good. Okay. So what I, what I'm saying, though, is it's a lot about perception, right? So we, we've all talked a little bit about perception. We may not have said the word perception, but it's all about perception and how we are presenting the, quote, "North Haven Indians." So just gonna throw something out there. You know, the C I A C has a rule now, like, especially during tournament time, that the captains have to say, you know, to, or someone has to say an announcement in the beginning of the game, like, about sportsmanship, about blah, blah, blah. So why can't we do something in the beginning of every game? We do a little, like, thing about why the, you know, the indigenous people of North Haven are so important to our town, so that we educate the masses when they're here in North Haven on why this is what it is and why we have such a, why we wanna honor that. Do you know what I mean? So, like, I get what you're saying. I just think we can find a way to make it right on all sides, too. Like, I, I would want us to spend some time and really try to make it okay. Granted, that's my own opinion, and there's other people in this room, but I, I do think we can try to, try to come to some sort of balance here. I'm using balance and perception a lot, but that's what is going on in my head.
I, I think that's why it's so important that we incorporate some form of education in whatever we do, whether it's, like you said, something before football games or curriculum.
Or goals, or everything?
Correct. And I think there's a lot of ways that we can go about doing that as a board and, and I'm listening, again, to everybody, and what I keep going back to in my mind is, really, out of all this, and I like the way, you know, Superintendent Sturke said this before, we're all kind of just renting space. The real stakeholders are the students in the district. What is in the best interest of those students? And I honestly, I wish I had an easy answer to that. I don't think there is any easy answer because you have sets of students that are diametrically opposed. Some think the only solution is to get rid of it. Others think the only solution is, is to keep it. And so I realize, really, nothing that I just said is all that helpful to further, either of those ends, I'm just.
No, it was a nice summary. It was.
I just know, right?
Good update.
Can I make a comment on the student comment, though?
Yeah.
Thanks. So I realize that the students are on opposite ends of this, and that's something that I care about deeply and that I respect. But part of our mission is to prepare the students for a diverse 21st century digital world, right? And I hire a lot of young people. And I'll tell you that having what some, at least some, consider to be a culturally inappropriate and insensitive mascot would not fly in a modern corporate workforce. That is, that is not, I, I feel as though we're almost doing a disservice to our students by not preparing them to interact with people who are not comfortable with the use of something like the word "Indian," right? And I realize that some people are comfortable with that, and I respect that. But there have been a lot of people who have reached out to us very nicely with very well-thought-out emails and research that I have read. And I, I feel strongly that keeping the name "Indian" is not going to sit well with them. I am somebody who is personally a little bit uncomfortable with the name "Indian." I am, I am that person. I'm one of them. So to me, this is an issue that will just be kicked down the road for another year if we decide that we're not gonna address the name. And there are enough people who are uncomfortable with this. And there are real-world consequences based on the studies that we have seen. We have seen studies that have said that, you know, it does potentially lead to less culturally sensitive people when they're exposed to this type of language. And to me, if we're gonna truly prepare students for a 21st century, diverse, digital world, they need to be prepared to have tough conversations about what folks are comfortable with.
Amanda, go ahead. No, go ahead, Goldie.
Amanda, can I just ask a question? So in terms of what you just mentioned, the fact that we're going to look at the education and the academic and the curriculum part of it in terms of educating our, our students, does that add value to your concern? Does that address your concern in terms of trying to allocate, you know, students who can succeed in a diverse environment or diverse world?
Well, I'm gonna say something that's gonna get my house dicked. Look out, okay. So I, I think we're all agreeing that we need to definitely educate folks more on the native history of these people. Where I disagree is that the history of the Indians belongs to North Haven, and that is something that we can feel comfortable using and saying is a part of our history. That is where I am uncomfortable. Because it's not a part of, of like, our, like, specific history. There are some Native folks who still live here and who have asked us. Some have asked, have told us that they don't feel like it's disrespectful. Some have told us that it makes them deeply uncomfortable and that they don't agree that it belongs to us. And I think this is a really tough conversation to have. And I, like, I wanna just reiterate that I'm, I'm so thankful that you folks are all coming to this in good faith. But I just, I, I have a problem with us saying that, that it's our history. Because Indians are, are not our history. It was a mascot that was incepted in the 50s. That's not a native history. It is misrepresenting an entire group of people who were either Kwinapiak, Golden Hill Paguset, Pequod, et cetera. Like, so until we can really kind of make sure that we're presenting that history accurately, I am, I'm uncomfortable with it.
So if, but if, I think we need to present that history accurately, like you're saying, to the students and to everybody. And I think the context in which the Indian was chosen to be the mascot was to honor and recognize that, you know, the mistreatment of the indigenous people, to recognize and honor those that were here first. So I get maybe it wasn't done the right way, but I do think we as a group should, maybe not we as a group, but I, I think, you know, it should be recognized that the context in which it was chosen was no means to be disrespectful.
I totally agree. Totally agree.
So I think we should. So, I think we should really work, I feel like I'm just kind of saying the same thing, and I'll stop talking after this, but, you know, you're saying that it's our duty, and I completely agree, that we need to educate our students on how to be able to function appropriately in a diverse world, right? That's what you were saying. And I think that it's our duty to make sure that within the curriculum, we have teachable moments where we can teach the students to be able to function and to be able to understand where everybody is coming from. The Native Americans, all different races, as Jen was saying before. I think it is our duty to make sure that they can function, and I think we can use this as a stepping stone to ensure that we start to do that in our curriculum, so that they can function in a diverse world. So, I think instead of us kind of looking at this in a negative fashion, I think we need to spin it and look at it in a positive fashion and try to infuse all the things that we're all talking about into it. And we all keep going back to curriculum.
Well, yeah, that should happen regardless. That's a separate, that's a separate conversation. I think everyone agrees that needs to happen anyways. Now, we're back on topic.
Yeah, I'm in for that. I'm in for a discussion about curriculum. The only problem is that I don't think that keeping the Indian name addresses the folks who have done the research and have taken it upon themselves to educate themselves on the history and have said that they still have a problem with it. And I think that we have started receiving increasingly frustrated emails from these folks, because telling them that, oh, we're just gonna educate about it, when they've already sent us a lot of studies that we've all read, explaining in great detail what kind of harm this can cause to people. And it feels like we're just kind of shoving a whole portion of the population to the side and saying, "Well, your opinion doesn't, isn't really valid," because we're just gonna add some stuff to the curric-" and I don't want to say that, because that's absolutely not what you're saying.
That's not what I was saying.
I know, I know that's not what you're saying. I know. But it feels a little bit like we're discounting the folks who are asking us and telling us that they have done research on this. They are, some of them are experts in their fields, and they're telling us that this is harmful for students. Like, what do we say to those people?
When we're talking about, talking about history in our curri-, in the curriculum, I mean, I think our obligation is the truth. And the history of the Native Americans that settled in North Haven and North Haven did not have a good outcome. Matter of fact, the Kwinapiaks left this area long before the schools were even built and moved to Waterbury. Some of them migrated to Wisconsin. I would imagine you could ask high school students that went through Montague School and ask them, "Tell me all you know about Chief Montague." I'm wondering if anybody even knows the history of Chief Montague. He was a sub-chief under Ramon Ogden. His clan was 19 people. So, I mean, I'm glad our school is named after him, but I think the lack of our local Native American history is, is, it's really-
But I think we all agree on that.
Yeah, yeah. But again, the truth is not gonna be pretty when we talk about the history.
And I don't, I don't think, I think, like you're saying, it should be presented factually. Like, it shouldn't be altered, like, it is what it is. That's what happened, and we need to understand what happened. And I think we all agree on that. I mean, I don't want to speak for anybody, but-
No, but I think you're right. If you look throughout history, there's a lot of things that are not pretty, but it's history, and the obligation is to put it forward in the manner that, like you said, truthfully represent how it happened. I think if we're gonna choose to have a curriculum or a component of our curriculum that educates on Native American history in this area, and it's not a pretty history, as you said, then our obligation is to show, and, you know, obviously, there's different grade levels that you're going into, and you address it differently for someone in first grade than you would somebody in 10th grade, but the obligation is to put it forth as to how it happened. And like you said, that's, it's not a pretty picture that you're painting. Amanda, if I could, I don't know if I fully understood everything you said, so if I could just kind of play devil's advocate to something that you said, just so I could help me to understand it. When you're talking about, and I agree with you in the sense of part of our obligation, and I think part of our mission statement is to produce responsible citizens that are gonna go into a corporate and a global world, I'm, when you say, "Keeping the school district under the name Indian," how is it changing the way those students go into and understanding a global workforce by removing a word from the name?
Yeah. That's a really good question, Joe. I think that's a good question. So, let's, let's talk about that a little bit, right? So, we have gotten emails from several former students who have said, when they, when they left North Haven, which is a great town, they left the nest and went to college and went to get jobs elsewhere, they were embarrassed. When, you know, one story that comes to mind is a student who said they went to a college and they were all introducing themselves as their high school mascots. And when they got to that person, they said that they lied, and they said they were something else, because they didn't feel comfortable introducing themselves as an Indian. And we got several of these emails from former students saying, like, "I didn't really feel prepared for the world outside of North Haven, because I thought this was okay before." And then, you know, there was another one about a student who was wearing their Indian sweatshirt on, on, in the outside world, right? And that they got dragged for it. They were made fun of and that they felt uncomfortable after the fact, and they got into, you know, a conversation with their friends who said, you know, "It's not really okay that you're wearing that sweatshirt right now." So, so these are, you know, stories that have been brought back to us from people when you go outside of the North Haven bubble, that there are real-world consequences. And I feel as though it might be a disservice to our students to have them be surprised when that happens.
Can I just speak out there for one second? Amanda, just a quick thought for me, and I'm not sure how it works in with your conversation, but you talk about how the students are embarrassed and upset, and they couldn't defend themselves or didn't know how to discuss the word Indian with people that said it was no, you know, that they shouldn't be using that. Maybe that all goes back to the education background in the curriculum, that if they knew about the history of the Native American or Indian in the town, they could easily defend it. So, I think maybe that lack of education as they go through the system, and then they go to college, and somebody kind of blindsides them, and they don't really have facts or information to have a conversation with that person about it. So, I think that, you know, the education aspect may be one of the ways to alleviate that issue.
I don't think anybody is arguing that we shouldn't be doing a lot more education from, like, a native perspective. So, I think that's, that's an excellent point. And I would just ask another question back, right? So, in addition to educating our students, like, they are running into social situations that make them uncomfortable outside of North Haven, which is outside of the scope of the purview of this board. You know, we can't, we can't make sure that everybody who goes to all the different colleges is comfortable with the word Indian. And I don't know, based on, you know, the three other districts who recently switched from the name Indian, the Washington sports team, the Cleveland sports team, like, everybody else shifting away from this trend, I don't know that that educational piece outside of North Haven is a reasonable expectation in my mind. You know, I love, I love having respectful disagreements with folks, so you can feel free to disagree, but-
Yeah, no, and, and I, you know, and I, and I agree. We should be able to disagree. And on this, I think we do disagree a little bit, because as the board, we've mentioned many times, that our responsibility is to educate the people in the district, correct? So, we're not gonna be able to change the minds of everyone in the world. We're just here to prepare the people and the students in our district about the name and about the history and how it affected us. I'm sure there are many conversations, you know, most if not all of us have been to college. There are many unpleasant or uncomfortable conversations that you're gonna have, because you're meeting people from all over the country and/or the world. So, to say that you're gonna be able to prep somebody for every conversation that's uncomfortable, I think is impossible. So, the only thing you can do, is the best you can do, is to teach them about what's going on in the town, and let them use that in their conversation how they feel is the best way to use it. But I don't think-
That's another fair point, too, but I have a question, though, on that, right? So, let's say that we all agree that curriculum is the way forward. Are we gonna teach in our curriculum that the Mashentucket Pequod asked us to retire this nickname and that we decided that we were gonna educate on it instead? Are we gonna teach that the Golden Hill Pagusit said that they feel as though it's cultural appropriation and that they don't feel like we should be using that as our mascot and moniker? Is that gonna be part of the curriculum?
Well, that's for us to decide moving forward, you know, what is and what isn't. I mean, there are a thousand aspects of that culture. Are we gonna provide information on the thousand aspects, or are we gonna try to narrow it down to the base? I don't, I don't know. So, that's something we'll have to look at moving forward. But I do appreciate your passion for it. It's awesome.
Gotcha. I think you and I are gonna get along. I really do.
Amanda, something, like, I was just trying to quickly read through this memorandum of understanding, and again, I get where you're coming from. I, and I, I don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable. And my, like, like I said, I'm a first generation. I grew up feeling uncomfortable in my own skin, okay? I grew up very different than all of my classmates. Like, I didn't speak English well, like, my parents always spoke Greek, like, I don't want anybody to feel uncomfortable. I don't, because I lived it. But I also learned through that difficulty, and I'm, like, I'm just talking, just because this is all going on in my head right now, like, I still am in social situations where, like, something that someone's doing or is talking about, like, is not normal to me, because it's just not the way I grew up or the way, you know, my little bubble was when I grew up. But I've learned to have a discussion about it and to educate and say, I still get made fun of for certain things, like, and I'm 40 years old, and I still get made fun of for certain things, just because of the way I was brought up and in my mind, what's right versus, you know, how somebody else grew up. But I've learned to be able to talk through it. We're also teaching our kids to be able to talk through it and educate and talk about why we do certain things, or, or talk about the culture as a whole. Like, I, like, I see what you're saying, and by no means do I want anybody to be uncomfortable, because I grew up uncomfortable. So, I don't want that to happen, but I do think we have a duty to help our students understand how to navigate those social situations as well, and how to be able to, you know, talk about what it is. And I think, I don't know, I feel like we've reached a stalemate, because we just keep talking about the same thing. But I, you know, personally, I'd like to just have us continue the conversation, I don't know if it's tonight or another day, about how we can try to come to an agreement, you know, between ourselves. Like, this memorandum of understanding, I know what you're saying, like, it is between the tribes, the tribes have okayed it. Like, Central Michigan, the N C double A said it was okay. Catawba is the Catawba Indians. They had an agreement that made it okay. And a lot of it is not just, like, the education in the curriculum, where, like, in third grade, they learn about this, in fifth grade, they take a field trip, like, it's really part of the school. Like, in my head, what I picture is, like, you walk into that foyer, and Superintendent Sturck's gonna be like, "You're spending too much money with what you're saying." But, like, you walk into the high school, and it has, like, a timeline of events. So, it's not just what they're blah, 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 hearing in class, but it really becomes part of what they're seeing. Like, they see the history, it's a timeline. Like, I went into one school of nursing, for instance, and I walked in and I was like, "Wow, this would be so cool if we could portray the history of the North Haven indigenous people, like, in the high school foyer." The foyer's huge, and it's like the perfect place to have, like, a timeline of events, of true events, Doc, to your point. But, so, it's like visible, and they can see it, and it's not just, "Here's a worksheet, like, here's a, you know, fill this out, oh, we're gonna take a field trip." You know what I mean? So, I don't want you to think I'm saying it's okay to just patch on, like, some educational content somewhere. Like, I'm trying to really find a way to, like, make it so that it is an educational opportunity in so many facets of the schools, where it's not just the sports team. Like, I get what you're saying about the sports team, Jen, and how was the announcement, but I think there's a way that we can make it so that it is a portrayal of, like, you know, a district-wide, you know, "This is what really happened. You guys need to know about it." Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say?
It makes sense to me, Alani, and I agree that, like, teaching the truth about what's happening is, is of the utmost importance. I think that, you know, educating our students in an authentic way is really important. I think the area where we disagree is the stakes involved with keeping the mascot and the moniker versus, the nickname and the moniker versus changing the nickname and the moniker. I agree that we're at a little bit of stalemate, we keep rehashing other things. I'm happy to talk about this more. I think this was a really good discussion. And I would definitely encourage more conversation about this. But in my mind, there's just so much more to be gained by bringing those folks into the fold who are telling us that they have a problem with it. And having everybody be able to wear whatever animal it is proudly. And right now, the fact is that there are at least some folks who are really not proud to wear-
And it's not just in this town, right? You're talking about, it's, it's a nationwide pushback against the utilization of groups of people in that manner. It's not just here in North Haven where there's pushback and people being uncomfortable. So, it's a nationwide movement to say, "Hey, this isn't okay." But there are places where it is okay. You see where I'm having trouble?
I do, but I also think those folks are still highly visible. You have a higher native population in the areas that we're talking about. And those are folks that are still highly visible, you know, that's where a lot of the studies have taken place, but there's-
You mean, the southwest?
Yeah. Right now, where we live, it's not the same. And half, you know, half of all native folks don't live in metro areas, so it's not something, and they most, most live on reservations, which is, to Goldie's point, where the greatest pushback is, against the use of Indians in a sports team, a sports connotation, a sports context. But when we look at the national level, not just the collegiate level, but the national level of professional sports teams, there's a reason that these conversations are being had. It's no longer appropriate, and not just appropriate, but acceptable or respectful to take a group of people and water it down to, in essence, of a mascot or a sports team name. But I agree with everything else. I agree, I love your timeline idea, I love the whole thing. I love the history, I love putting that in the curriculum. But I can't, I can't get behind the name using a race of people as any sort of sports team name. It's-
I think we just have an opportunity to start a new tradition, too. This is a great opportunity to, to let the current students potentially pick something new and really move forward without, I think that certain folks feel like other folks are finger-wagging at them, and I think that other folks are feeling like they're not being heard. By starting a new tradition, we remove all that tension, we remove all that friction, and we can all kind of celebrate together.
Actually, it was two years ago, Manchester in Connecticut changed their mascot, and they did it over, what I liked was looking at their timeline. It actually started, the impetus was the students themselves had a survey, and many of them wanted to change. And then they had a very good system of how they went and retired, and they had a group, come up with a new mascot and a new name, and a lot, you know, a lot of, and there were stakeholders, too, you know, the town, the school system, and it, I think it went, well, there was battles, you know, obviously, because there was disagreements. But at the end, after about 18 months, I think they were able to come to some decisions that satisfied, you know, not every party probably was happy, but at least- that satisfied, you know, not every party probably was happy, but at least they were able to decide, make a decision. And my concern is, for us in North Haven, this has been, this discussion is now in its sixth year. And I'm really, you know, hoping that we can start the new school year having made a decision, whatever the decision is.
And I just wonder how the name Indians meshes with our SEL curriculum? Like, how is that, we have a huge social-emotional learning push, everyone gets the newsletters every week. Is this aligned? You know, our kids are hearing all of that, but they're also hearing all this, right? And they go to the sports games, and so we're working with them on anti-racist, anti-biased stuff, along with social-emotional learning on one hand, and on the other hand, it's like, now, here are your North Haven Indians. They, they're not, they're not in alignment, we somehow have to find some alignment.
Wasn't there a school that changed the mascot, but then they changed it back?
Yeah, that was very political, very political.
That was Killingley, yeah.
As a matter of fact, the, the school changed it, but the town over, went and changed it back. So it wasn't the school board changing their mind, it was, it was legislative.
No, I think that they-
They had a new board.
They had a new board.
They changed, it was an election, I think the composition of the-
Oh, I stand corrected, I stand corrected, yeah.
But, I mean, Killingley, that did happen, but then there was also Farmington, Newington, and Watertown, who have all changed since Guilford made the change, which I think was kind of the, what brought this discussion up again. Farmington changed it in December, Watertown in January, and Newington last June.
Go ahead, Jen.
I just, I think there's a difference that needs to be pointed out, because I heard both you, Jen, and Amanda talk about the use of, like, the word "Indian" on the professional sports side. And I think it's important to look at it, at least from my perspective, in two different ways, where you can draw a distinction between the North Haven Indians and the Cleveland Indians, or the Washington Redskins. And I think everybody can kind of agree Redskins is much different than Indians, and much more offensive, just word, word against word. But the professional sports teams, and I look at this as important in the sense, those are for-profit organizations that are using a race of people on marketing and promoting those business, and their businesses, they're big businesses, as a way to put a product out that people are purchasing. As a school district, we're not, we're not doing that.
Right.
There may be, you know, people purchasing a sweatshirt or something to help support their team, or to get their kids to go to a, a conference game, or a travel game, or something like that, but I think those are very different. And then, like I said, also Redskins is much different than Indians. And if, if you wanna draw the line of saying, okay, well, North Haven Indians, Cleveland Indians, Cleveland Indians had Chief Wahoo, he was pounding on a drum, I mean-
He was a cartoon, he was an actual cartoon.
Yeah, there's-
I get it, but Indians and, it's still, it's inappropriate. So is Redskins, there's degrees of that, but it still falls under that umbrella of not okay.
But what, what I'm saying is, I don't think you can say they're apples-apples. I think they're apples to oranges, because they're, they're very different situations.
If you boil that down to a essence, I see what you're saying about profit, no, we're not for profit. The actual just use of people as mascots, people of color as mascots, okay? Because we're gonna leave the Fighting Irish out of this, and the Trojans, and all of that. We're leaving all of that out. All those folks are white-presenting, that's different, right? That's white-presenting, that's a whole situation than black and brown people of color, including our Indigenous folks. And that is bottom line, what this, what we've kind of skirted around a little bit, but that is a serious conversation that we need to talk about, you know, we need to have in North Haven. And we're predominantly white-town, we're predominantly white-board, and the audacity of making, and I do believe it's audacity, I think it's thoughtful conversation, I do, but I think, I think in the end, coming out and saying, "Well, this, you know, we're just gonna do all this stuff, and this will make this okay to call our sports teams," a term that's not okay? That's, that just, I, that can't ever sit well with me.
Yep, and I'm not saying it should or shouldn't, I'm just saying, I think, if you wanna compare it to what other school districts have done, and reasons like that-
Or just looking at that while you were talking.
That's, you know, I, I think it's fine, but to say what a business is doing as opposed to what an educational institution is doing, I think it's-
We can talk about college teams too, right, that have made that decision.
Of course.
So that's, you know, I mean-
But, I mean, let's, let's be realistic, too. A lot of those college programs are humongous moneymakers for their, their schools. There's, there's other factors that go on there, other than just education. And, and the last thing I, I wanna say is, we keep turning it around to, you know, what's on the uniform, or what we're saying at the football games, but we're not just saying North Haven Indians as a sports team or a sports program, it's, it's our whole district. Like, we keep isolating it to that one thing. I just think, and it's a fair point, right? I mean, because we are going out there, traveling to other towns, and saying we're the North Haven Indians. I'm not saying we're not, but I don't think we can just look at it in isolation as some sports teams. It's, it's a whole piece, it's the, the school, it's the education, it's the content that we're putting to, or in the curriculum, it's a sports team we're putting on the field, it's everything that I think we really need to look at and determine, one way or the other, whether we're gonna keep it, modify it, change it, whatever we do. And one of the things that I like so much about this board, and that I think we function so highly, is because this is a pretty divisive topic. I mean, it's, it's polarizing, and we've all been sitting here for two hours, listening to everybody's perspective, disagreeing at times, but finding common ground at times, too. And I think it's important to keep that in perspective, that we're all listening, nobody's prejudging, and I think we're making progress, albeit it might be slow progress, but we're making progress.
And I don't, I don't think we're trying to say the education as a Band-Aid to then say, like, "Oh, do the education, then we can keep it." Like, I think we're truly trying to make this okay, Jen. Like, I don't, I don't want you to think I'm just saying, like, throw a Band-Aid on it-
No, 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 I wouldn't reduce what you said to that level, not at all. No, look, I'm saying there may be no amount of work that would make that name okay, right? So, and I know it's not a Band-Aid, and I'm telling you, I'm a hundred percent behind all of the Native education that should be happening in our schools. I'm a hundred percent across the board. But where those representatives would be, would be primarily our sports teams, right? That's where the visibility is, that's where the word would be used, a word that is not acceptable. And so that's why I'm saying, I'm hearing what everybody's saying, and I love the educational aspect of it, I think that's critical. I really do think we need to move on that sooner rather than later. But I just can't get behind this for sports. It's just, it's just, the name is just not okay. And, and I think our kids, when they're going off to college, it's not just the sports thing, it's we're finding that on a national level, the conversation over the past several years has been issues around people understanding the impact that race has. And that's really what we're talking about. We're talking about race when we're talking about Indians. And I think that's the part that I don't think I could rectify. But I agree with everything else that I'm hearing.
So, this is my takeaway here. I think we need to have more discussion, a lot came out of this conversation tonight. I think all of us need to go back and digest this conversation about the word "Indian", using the name "Indian." That's, that's point one. I think point two is, we need to bring to vote the retirement of the caricature. I think that's something that we need to have a vote on about retiring that, you know, I committed to that sooner or later, it's not, but we still keep that word "Indian" open. I've got a couple of ideas of something that I wanna do, and people I wanna reach out to, including those that have recently changed their names. It looks like some of them, again, while we were talking, I was doing some stuff, it looks like some of them changed names who had names that were a little different. Chiefs, or Raiders, or, or things like that, some of them changed their name, but got rid, and got rid of their moniker, so I do wanna talk about that. So, you know, my thought, I don't wanna say it's my proposal, but I guess what I'm proposing is, we take to vote the retirement of the Indian moniker. That's number one. Number two, we set up another workshop between all of us within the next few weeks, because this is an organism, a group of people who will continue to do research. So we set that, we set that up for two weeks. We know that we are going to work with our curriculum committee to do some work on being more inclusive on Native American Studies. I may even recommend that we reach out to Krista Whipple, she's the education head over at the Pequot Tribal Nations, for some assistance on that. But, you know, that's not gonna happen today, that's not gonna happen tomorrow. So I'm thinking that the retirement of the Indian name-
Moniker?
Moniker, India, I'm sorry, moniker, thank you for correcting me. It should be our first thing to do. I think, as I listen to everybody, I believe that that's something we all wanna take to vote right now. The Indian name is still under discussion, and there was good discussion tonight that we should all take away with and think about and come back. And then three, we do the curriculum, Melinda, I saw you, you wrote that down. What do you all think of that?
Yeah, I think-
Do you wanna set the date for the next workshop?
Yeah, yeah. What, what did you have to say, Amanda, Goldie?
No, no, I agree, in terms of scheduling a vote on the, on the mascot.
We're talking about scheduling a vote, right, and not voting tonight?
We can't vote tonight.
Yeah, we're not allowed to vote tonight, yeah.
Right, we can't vote tonight.
It's a good plan.
Yeah, um, I'm just gonna pull my phone up for calendar. Okay, if everybody would check their calendars for May, May's probably busy for me, but let's see what we could do.
Looking at another Thursday, you know?
Whatever, Thursday's good.
Either Wednesday or Thursday.
It, Wednesday works, actually, Wednesday may be better, no, Wednesday doesn't work. Every other Thursday, I have a, you know, Thursday conference.
We have a lot of practices on Thursdays, but that's okay.
Or I could do a Wednesday, but it depends on the Wednesday.
What's everyone have? Let's, let's give some conversation from two weeks from now. Or, let me ask you this, do we have our next board meeting to be a workshop?
Everybody's looking at you.
Well, wait, do we have to talk about graduation at that board meeting, though?
Um, we decided that it was gonna be June fifteenth with the two rain dates.
Okay.
So-
It was last month.
Last month, yes, so-
I just didn't know there was any other discussion.
We're gonna have the last day of school.
Good.
Is it gonna go this long, two hours? Because if it's not, because we are only focused on one topic, rather than both, then it may not be like a two-hour thing, and so it can be added as part of the-
Maybe what we can do is start a workshop, and then go into it for one hour, and then go into our board event meeting.
So that's start an hour earlier than-
Yeah, and that doesn't work for people who are working, okay.
So what if we do the board meeting barring any major issues that-
I mean, sure, right? And then we go into our workshop.
And then hopefully nothing comes up and-
That's okay, and then we can just partition it out.
Yeah, that's the thirteenth of May. All right, shall we do that?
It's gonna be six o'clock, right?
Six o'clock on the thirteenth?
Did he say six o'clock?
Well, it's normal, board meeting-
What, six thirty?
Six thirty, okay.
So we're just splitting the difference.
We do six thirty, seven thirty, seven thirty, eight thirty.
Sure. Yeah, I don't even think our board meeting will go to seven thirty.
It's always dependent on, on public comment, because if it's a normal board meeting-
Oh, yeah, they would do some public comment.
Does that mean that the workshop topic falls into public comments?
The way the meetings have been run in the past, yes, there's, if we ever-
That may also affect the time.
If the board ever decided to add another separate public comment, we could do what's on the agenda and what's not on the agenda, but now that we only have one public comment, then it kind of all encompasses it.
Unless we just make that meeting a workshop.
We've done, we've done that before.
Can we do a hard stop on the meeting, including public comment? So this way, does it-
So people have something to-
You know, I prefer just to have a separate workshop, even if it's just for one hour. I really feel that we should have a separate workshop for that, separate conversation for that.
Will we write the motion for the moniker, for the removal of the caricature? Moniker, like, technically means name, so we probably wanna choose, like, caricature, or picture, or something like that?
Yeah, but we're like, saying, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here. Was it something about the change?
If, when we vote on change and removing the, the actual caricature. But moniker, moniker technically means name, so I don't know if it's a problem if we write moniker. For when you write the motion, that's all.
Thank you, thank you for telling me that. So it should call it the caricature.
Right.
Or symbol, or-
Symbol, image.
Symbol, right, imagery.
Imagery is better.
Can we go back to Wednesday?
Always teacher, because I never knew, realized that moniker was the word.
Goldie say-
Can we go back to Wednesday in terms of the workshop?
Wednesday, May one.
No, I do Wednesday.
Well, Jen can't do that.
I can do the fifth or the nineteenth of May.
Yeah, the fifth.
We do the nineteenth.
Is everybody okay? It's simpler than either of them, but it's not like anyone cares, but-
I can't, I can't do the fifth, that's like crazy.
Nineteenth? I'm okay with the nineteenth.
I can't do the nineteenth, my daughter's graduating from Southern.
Are they having-
Where you going?
Are they having video?
She hates you right now.
So the fifth?
Yes, two people can attend.
Is it during the day or nighttime?
Not a hundred percent sure, but I'm sure there's gonna be other things going on at night.
Just bring her here. Yeah, just celebrate here.
That would be her dream.
All right, well, I-
So the fifth?
I can't do the fifth.
Or you can't do the fifth.
The twelfth? And I think there were some other people who-
What about the eleventh?
The eleventh, the twelfth?
I could do the twelfth, but I could do the eleventh.
Can't we just set two separate meetings on the thirteenth? Since we all have that free? One is a regular meeting, and one is a separate workshop?
First, and with, with a hard stop, and, and then we will have our, our workshop. I think that's the best thing to do. I really wanted to have it separate, but that would be May thirteenth, right? All right, just let me, I gotta check something out here. I'm, I'm good. I guess that I have a standing work meeting every other week, it's seven in the morning, and then every other week it's eight thirty at night, so I'll double-check that. Okay, so now, let's discuss really quickly, when do we want to put the retirement of the Indian caricature, the Indian imagery to vote?
Should we do it on the thirteenth or not?
Yeah, I, I think I'm okay with that. You know, at first I was thinking that we should wait to the end of the year, let the seniors go, but I think because right now we're doing something that basically, we're voting on something that basically we've been doing all along, that I think that we're, it's good to do that.
It's past practice.
Past practice, yeah.
It's just formalizing. It's just normalizing.
Okay. Just add that, you know, what you had said before, that, you know, nothing that's pre-existing will be removed, and I think that's very important for everybody.
Yeah, you know, I look over here and I see some of these cloths that have the Indian-
Yeah, the rock.
Imagery there.
Everything.
Um, we're not gonna take these now. I think our band has awards that may have the Indian on them. It's hard earned, we're not gonna take those away.
So it's really, the motion would say from going forward from today, May whatever.
Officially retire the Indian caricature or Indian, that would be our motion.
Did you have this article on your phone, which Connecticut high schools have retained Native American mascots?
Yeah, that's what I was looking at when they were talking.
Yeah, and this is a, a common practice, is removing the imagery first.
Oh, okay. Can you send that to us, Doc?
I'm sorry?
Can you send that to everybody?
Send it to faculty, he can-
Does it say not now? Later.
Now, it was in, in July 23rd of last year, and the number of teams with, um, Native American, um, names has been dwindled from 20 to 17. So that would include last year, Farmington, because that was just recent. So we're probably down to about 15. Well, we've got some-
Joyce do all this? Joyce, did you do all this? Thank you so much. That must've taken you a good day. She's not gonna say anything.
I'm gonna request everybody to bring them with you.
Yes, yeah.
Um, before we adjourn, I just want to say thank you all. I think this was a really good discussion, really good perspective on all sides. So just want to say thank you. And was that, man, a motion to adjourn at 8:15?
Yeah, motion.
Second?
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is, meeting is adjourned, thank you.